Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call at the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is June 11th, Tuesday, time is 7:02. I'd like to thank SCTV for recording this meeting. And if you would all stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Take the roll call. Ali Bem?
Here.
David Blooming? Here. Aaron Leddick Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack?
Here.
Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice? Here. Elizabeth Burt?
Present.
Richard Cortez? He is excused absence. And Gary Lungarini? Absent. Okay, so we have six regular members of the Commission in attendance tonight, so there's no need to promote an alternate this evening. Okay. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes of our May 28 meeting. Alan, could you lead us through that?
Yeah. Regarding the minutes of May 28, on page 1, does anybody have any additions or corrections? On bottom, page 2.
On line 51, information regarding the grading systems, I think it should be drainage systems. We're talking about drainage. Is there one agreement on that? Yep?
Uh huh. Anything else on page 2? Motion to approve with the correction. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Very good. Okay. On the agenda, we have an open public hearing. This is regarding the application number 1602, Mansour Prime Properties LLC agent, Voice Palmer owner, for 19 lot affordable housing subdivision under CGS 8-30G. On the property located at 80 Climax Road, assessors map D-20, block 608, block 001, zone R-40. And this is, public hearing continued from May 28. As we recall at our last meeting, we had some additional information that was presented by the member of the public. We chose to listen to the material. We did not make a decision to accept or ignore it at that time. We felt it be right to allow the applicant and town staff to reply to the material that was presented. We are in possession of two letters, one from Castor Jones &amp; Associates Incorporated, I think that's Mr. Quirk representing the applicant, and another from Jeff Shay, Town Engineer, Town of Simsbury. Each responding to what was raised by Mr. Nozovich, who was the member of the public. And we see that we did not receive any additional information from Mr. Nozovich.
Correct.
So, we really don't have a way to determine the validity, or accuracy, or relevance of the material that was presented. That's my, you have what you have. Yep, we have what we have. So, in my opinion, there's no foundation to it. So, I'm not inclined to accept, you know, to include it in my deliberations.
I think we just have to treat it as an apparently informed homeowner, but we can't give it a lot of weight because we don't know upon qualifications.
I would agree with you. Without knowing the qualifications of the person, I'd s- remember the public making those comments. There was no, Michael, there was no correspondence either way? I mean, just, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, take that for what it's worth in judging the weight of that We have the two, the two letters that were submitted, and I think, I'd like to hear each of the people who submitted them give a synopsis and a conclusion as it relates to the three urban points on the application, you know, those the 7, 8, and 9 that were remanded back to the Commission. So, Mr. Quirk of, you could go first.
Andrew Quirk, professional engineer and principal of Castor Jones &amp; Associates. I submitted the letter dated June 5, 2019, under the letterhead Castor Jones &amp; Associates, and I'll just go through briefly the points that were made in response to the concerns that were raised by Mr. Nozovich. Mr. Nozovich raised the concern of climate change as it relates to a potential future increase in the 100-year storm event, and its impact on the stormwater system. The stormwater modeling for the project used the current IDF, or intensity duration frequency curve data from NOAA. And this is in accordance with your Simsbury Highway Construction and Design Standards, section 5.2.4E, which is the rainfall runoff criteria. Just sort of as a side note, but this question comes up a lot about whether those numbers are appropriate. I just pulled out some storm data.
Sure.
Because the question comes up a lot about whether these storms are relevant, so, sort of as a side note, but just for information for this application or others. The first page highlighted in yellow is that NOAA table, and I highlighted the 24-hour rainfall for the various recurrence intervals, so, a 100-year storm is a 1% chance in any given year. So, those range from 2.7 for the one-year storm, up to 8.75 for the 100-year storm. And these are 24-hour, which is a little bit different than daily, so it's any 24-hour period versus daily is midnight to midnight. But just for relevancy, I guess, as to how those numbers compare, on the second sheet is the National Weather Service data from 1918 to 2019, so 100 years and six months. And it's sorted by the highest daily, so it's slightly different than 24-hour, but still highest daily rainfall in any of those given years. So, the highest rainfall in the last 100 years in a day was 7.7 inches in 1955. And the 100-year storm we use is 8.75, a little bit of apples and oranges because it's daily versus 24-hour, but, and working your way down, I just highlighted, so yellow would be the 50, 50 would be, you know, two occurrences. 25-year storm is 6.76, and the fourth highest storm was 5.72. 10-year would be the 10th highest is 5.47, and 4.41 occurred. 5-year storm would be your 20th, simplistically, your 20th highest storm, 4.53, and what occurred was 3.34. Working all the way down to the bottom in green, the two-year storm is 3.4, and the 50th highest storm was 2.47. So, that's just sort of background, that these numbers are tested, they're updated, and when you look at actual weather data, it's in line. It's appropriate. The second point that was brought up was that of the spillway water elevation for the two stormwater basins. The, again, going to your standards from the Highway Design Manual, it talks about the appropriate storm frequency. It says the detention basin shall be designed for a storm return frequency of not less than 25 years. So, looking at that for each basin, for basin one, there's a freeboard, which would be the difference in the top of the berm to the water surface elevation that was modeled. We have 1.69 for the 25-year storm, and 1.13 for the 100-year storm. So, more than the standard of the one foot that's used for the design purposes. For basin number two, it was 1.88 and 1.75 for the 25 and 100-year storm. The third concern that was raised was that of the possibility of groundwater mounding causing lateral water infiltration, moving northwest from our property to the adjacent property, southeast property line. There's several features that are in the plan that are designed to prevent this from happening. First, the proposed plan calls for the construction of a grass swale along the property line, so any of the runoff, especially for the rear lots 1 and 2, is directed towards the stormwater basin and onto adjacent properties. The basin is to be constructed with a compacted earthen berm, so that this will act as a barrier to the water that's retained, that's detained in the basin from passing on to other properties. Finally, the water surface elevation of the orifice, the pipe that flows out of the bottom of the basin is at 303. This is 1.6 feet lower than the driveway. So, that water is going to be controlled by a positive overflow height down below, 1.6 feet below that of the driveway. And then, any repainted water in that bottom, which is elevation 302.25, again drains within 72 hours, we've talked about that quite a bit. So, all of this is below the driveway elevation. So, those concerns are alleviated by the design that has been put in place. The other concern was that of the recharge infiltration for roof runoff. Although this issue is not directly related to the reasons 7, 8, and 9, it is noted that the system includes an overflow from the roof leaders downspout, so that, to control any overflow from those discharge systems. The groundwater recharge systems are an important best management practice as for low-impact developments, to return the stormwater to the most adjacent natural state to where the stormwater is generated. The resident submitted 24-hour rainfall data, which is not appropriate for the design of a roof area. We design the roof areas or any sub watershed area by the time of concentration, and it doesn't address the routing principles, which is the passage of that water through the system. The plan before you does store the 100-year storm event for the design time of concentration, and this exceeds the Highway Construction and Design Standards, section 5.2.5D1, for storm drainage laterals, which requires the 10-year storm to be the design event. Finally, Mr. Nozovich raised a concern of the basin number two soil permeability, as I presented at the last meeting, that the use of test pit 101A is not appropriate, as it is 6.3 feet below the basin bottom, it doesn't reflect the soil interaction with the stormwater in the basin. So, in conclusion, the concerns raised by Mr. Nozovich regarding climate change are not relevant to the court's remand regarding soil testing for the basin and drywall area and its application to the stormwater design. The Commission and Town Engineer previously reviewed the stormwater modeling solely designed, and the issue of potential groundwater mounding has been addressed by the design of the proposed compacted berm and the outlet structure, overflow elevation to maintain stormwater elevations below the adjacent pavement. The concern of recharge infiltration is beyond the specific court remand of the stormwater basin and drywall soil testing and analysis, but we did address that in the letter I filed.
Would you have any questions or, Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Quirk?
So, the recharge units is outside the scope of what the remand was, correct?
Excuse me?
The recharge units, because I see Mr. Shay has a comment, but if the recharge units aren't part of the remand, I don't want to bring it up because it wouldn't be relevant.
Recharge units meaning the, from the roof leaders to the?
Yeah, I just, there's, I just was going to ask Mr. Shay, but if it's not relevant to the court, what was remanded, then I don't, you know, I don't want to muddy the waters.
Well, I think the three reasons that were remanded all go to the functionality of the system, and you heard some testimony from the member of the public that the recharge units weren't, wouldn't be, wouldn't function the way the engineer designed them, but could add additional water into that system and therefore overflow. So, I think recharge units, questions would be relevant to the, to the remand?
I'd like to just ask a question with clarification. You defined freeboard once before, could you say that one more time?
Sure, the elevation from the top of the berm to the various water surface elevations for the different storms. So, when we model the stormwater basin for the 25-year storm, for example, the water comes up to 307.3, and the berm is at 308. So, there's 1.7 feet of a safety factor, if you will, between the berm and the water surface elevation, you know, the top of the berm and where the water would actually be.
That's an indication of whether it would spill over or not?
Correct. There is a spillway that sits, you know, there may be water going over the spillway, but this is unused upper portion of the basin that's there as a, as a safety factor, as a freeboard, as a insurance, that we'd never want the water to go over the berm. If it goes over an emergency spillway or somewhere that it's designed to, that's appropriate. So, this is unused safety factor elevation.
So, to look at the numbers, typically, the berm, 306.8 feet, 306.8 feet, and the freeboard is 1.885 and 1.75. Well, there's, these are very typical, but most of the freeboards are less than two feet, we'll say, on over 300 feet of berm. So, what you're saying is we have less than 1% of clearance?
No, the elevations, those are elevations relative to sea level. That's not, that's not linear foot of berm, that's elevation 306.8 above sea level. So, it's not a, not a linear percentage. Okay. And also, when we design these, you know, there's a, if we were to design these with two to three feet of freeboard, that wouldn't be appropriate either. We'd have all these empty basins that are, you know, if you try to design them appropriately so that they're used efficiently. So, we are usually between that one and two feet, so that it's an efficiently designed basin. We want it to function properly, we want to have safety freeboard, but there's, it doesn't make sense to have empty detention basins taking up spaces in inappropriate landscape space.
Any other questions, your comments, Commissioners? Thank you. Jeff, if you could come up, please?
Sure.
Just give us your take on the situation.
When I ask or answer the questions, I didn't really consider the remand, I basically looked at questions on, you know, on value and just kind of tried to answer them as intelligently as I could. In terms of the first item from this note, which is presentation of climate change, the design criteria that was utilized by the applicant's engineer, I think, was appropriate. I think Andrew did a good job explaining a little bit about, I guess, the evolution of the science of selecting a rainfall intensity curve or amount for a certain storm. I would also add that the NOAA, the new NOAA guidance actually is more site-specific than the old criteria, which makes it more accurate for the actual design. To the, you know, to the extent that West Simsbury would be different than the center of Simsbury for a design criteria. So, it's a fairly sophisticated tool. I would not recommend deviating from the probability of it being higher or lower than that storm, and I think it's appropriate for this, this design, so I just leave it at that. In terms of groundwater mounding, I believe Mr. Nozovich's concerns were the potential saturation of the driveway that would possibly deteriorate the structural capacity of the driveway, and maybe cause additional maintenance to that driveway. The overtopping, I agree with Andrew that the one foot plus of freeboard is sufficient for this type of facility. You may want a higher freeboard if there was other concerns such as wave action, if it was a larger basin. This is in the case here, and as Andrew had said, the spillway is actually armored to resist erosion of that particular spillway, whereas the berm is not. So, the design's appropriate for what it's intended to do. The phenomenon of groundwater mouting is not something we consider too often in our designs. It's a fairly complex analysis. There's multiple variables, and there's probably not enough information in this application to fully vet that. But in consideration of the size of this basin, which is relatively small, the groundwater mounding effect probably would not be that significant. Groundwater elevations are also relatively low here. There's at least four feet below the bottom of the basin, so there's plenty of storage within the soil to at least take some of that, that capacity. How quickly it moves away, we don't have that information. It's, again, it's groundwater movement. We don't even actually know which way the groundwater is actually moving in this location because we don't have enough information. But I'm not concerned about it, given the information we do have. I don't think it'll be an impactful phenomenon for this particular design. And given the relationship between the, again, low-flow orifice and the roadway, I agree that, you know, water essentially has to flow uphill for it to negatively impact the road. I will add that during, again, during a storm, when the stormwater basin is surcharged, there will be a head behind the stormwater basin that could push groundwater, you know, out through the basin or through the berms. But again, being that it's a compacted berm, that it's basically engineered, controlled placement of soil, that it should eliminate the, any significant seepage through that berm for a storm event, which is really less than, it's probably like a 12-hour period. It's a very small amount of time. So, I don't, I don't have any concerns with groundwater mounding in reference to this design, based on the information we have. The recharger infiltration matter, again, I, I think the rechargers are essentially under design for, for their retention. With the 100-year design storm being something that doesn't occur that often, it should be sufficient to store the water. And again, the rate of infiltration isn't as significant because the events don't happen that often. It should be fine. There was a discrepancy between the plans and the, and the actual computations. I think the computation spaced the, the result on four recharger units, and the plans actually show six. So, that's something that should be clarified as part of the final submission of plans.
I did indicate in the letter that we would hold the six of the plan, that the plan would recover.
So, essentially, there's more storage in the 100-year storm that should be provided as part of?
So, you're going to go back to six? It is going to be six?
Yeah, the plan calls for six. The detail was a standard detail that referenced four, but we, for this particular plan, it should be six, which is even more conservative.
I agree that the, if in fact these rechargers do overflow the grading, provided under the plan, will direct the water to the stormwater basin as opposed to the adjacent properties, if in fact the, you know, the project is constructed per the plan. In terms of soil permeability, I think I made the point at the last public hearing, or the last part of the public hearing, that we felt that the selected permeability rates were appropriate based on the data that was collected. So, you know, in consideration of all these comments, there's no significant new information that would change our opinion in terms of what we, you know, what our position was before relative to this particular project.
Questions for Mr. Shay, Commissioners?
You mentioned the depth of the stone of the rechargers too, so the six, what you said is clarify the number, which is six, but then you also said clarify the depth of stone for rechargers.
Right, the manufacturer has different stone depths for different applications. They clarified that it would be a six-inch stone depth. I think that was another point that Mr. Nozovich had brought up, that it wasn't clear what the, the manufacturer had various stone depths that were allowed, so making clear which one we would be using would have to be the six-inch stone depth.
And how did you come up with that? Why, is that, is that?
Well, six inches is standard for a yard application. You get into 12 and 18 inches if it was under a parking lot, structural issues, or if you needed to?
So, that's a standard depth?
Yeah, for this application.
And you would agree with that?
I would agree. Again, it adds a little bit of storage to the devices, probably the voids in the stone, so six inches is appropriate, and I think it was clear in the plans that it was six inches.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Shay. Okay, Commissioners, I think what I'd like to do is close the public hearing. We'll make a motion on it's appropriate, okay? And then we can deliberate. All right? So, Bob, any issue with that? I think, I don't even want to ask if there's any other, anyone else from the public who would wish to testify?
You held the public hearing hoping for the specific reason of allowing the applicant to now to respond to the information buried at the last session. With the invitation to the member of the public to bring in, I think, additional written material to substantiate the, the report that he gave and prove out the credentials of the person who drafted or presented some of the materials. He had that opportunity, he did not take advantage of it. Mr. Shay and Mr. Quirk have provided you with their reaction to the materials presented. So, I think you have everything you asked for on the limited scope of the session for this public hearing.
Okay. So, with that said, I make a motion to close the public hearing associated with the remanded aspects of application 16-02. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so, the public hearing is closed. Now we have time to discuss, debate amongst ourselves. Anyone have any comments?
I just want to thank Mr. Shay and Mr. Quirk coming back again and giving us information, so I appreciate your endurance on this. So, thank you again for taking the time to do that.
Yeah. I'd like to second that, as well as just to add that I appreciate also the applicant and Mr. Shay reviewing the additional information we presented during the last meeting and giving a further kind of assessment of that, you know, of that information. So, that was helpful to us.
As far as deliberating goes, I think this Commission, very thoughtfully and certainly slowly, went through all the information available, sifted through a lot of stuff, asked a lot of questions, came up with some reasons to disapprove it originally, and it was sent back to us, and whatever objections were left were assuaged, I think, by subsequent testing and. And whatever objections were left were assuaged, I think, by subsequent testing and verification by the town engineer. If we're just going to do this based on our duty and the facts and the remand from the court, I think we have to approve it.
I would agree with you, based on our narrow scope.
Yeah, let me just remind you, you remanded back on three issues from a court. I'm going to give you the standard that comes out of the cases. The commission's decision must be necessary, decision to deny must be necessary to protect a substantial interest in health, safety, or other matters that the commission may legally consider, and the risk of harm to such public interest must outweigh the need for affordable housing. Now, on the risk of harm element, the courts have said that it must be established that there is more than a theoretical possibility of specific harm to the public interest. The court found the first prong in favor of the commission on those three issues. The court found that there was a substantial interest in health, safety, or other matters that the commission may legally consider. The issue granted was found to meet that standard. The court really sent it back to you for additional evidence on the second prong, which is whether or not the denial is necessary to protect the risk of harm to such public interest and that to outweigh the, the affordable housing, having established through testimony of experts that there's more than a theoretical possibility of specific harm to the public interest. Is that clear?
And I'd like to make some comments about that.
That's the standard.
Yeah.
So now you need to apply what you've heard since the remand to that standard specifically on those issues and only those issues.
Okay, Holly, go ahead.
Okay. Now, does everybody have the memorandum of decision with you? I'm going to go through a few pages because you brought up a point that I've read this many times. There's a, there's something that really sticks in my craw every single time I read it. And it speaks exactly to what you just said. And what I would like to do is go back to what happened on the first issue that we identified, and that was harm because of the safety, traffic safety. And I would like you to please bear with me because I'm going to make a point that--
I can't, you can't--
Well, I wanted to talk about what the judge said about, all right? On page nine, just bear with me. On page nine, he said we are in a right to look, to show quantifiable probability that specific harm or result of the application is granted. On page 11, the role of the court is to determine if sufficient evidence supports these reasons. On page seven, on page 17, he then says the commission's insistence in its decision that lack of proper sightlines is a public safety concern was supported by sufficient evidence in the record, just as this other one was supported by sufficient evidence. But he then goes on and raises a precedence called Brenmark. And on page 27, or on page 26, or page 25 to 26, he says that the concept that the land use agency, that is us, must also, also must determine whether compliance is necessary to protect a substantial public interest and whether the risk of harm clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing. Now, he uses that broadly, but we can assume he means 830G, not just the general concept of affordable housing. He then goes on on page 27, and this is what sticks in my craw. The commission's decision denying the plaintiff's application did not consider or recite this question. That means had we said to ourselves, had we debated it and said, well, okay, you know, we could go one way or the other, if there is harm of safety, but what is the, the need for this affordable housing in our town? And we never really addressed that subject because we were kind of instructed that this was kind of out of our purvey, that we swore to uphold the laws of the state and the state said this was it. And we could only look for instances of public safety, which we did. But we never talked about whether we thought the instance of, of public hazard was outweighed by the need for affordable housing. And yet I wanted to go on the record and say, yes, Simsbury desperately needs affordable housing. However, per the rules of 830G as applied to Climax Road, that means homes that will be called affordable housing are built around the $275,000 purchase price. And there is absolutely no shortage of homes in this price range.
Okay, so--
There hasn't been, no, I just want to say, had we discussed, had we discussed that and we had used that also as evidence supporting that, that might not have even been overturned. Two wrongs do not make a right. It's a shame because I don't believe I'm the only one who thinks that this is not the kind of affordable housing we need. We've never aired that. But I also feel the same thing applies in the second instance. We do not need this. And the court did say that we found sufficient evidence of possible harm, according to what you just told me. So I feel quite strongly the opposite of what Alan says. I think to protect the public interest of safety and what our actual needs of affordable housing are, that it is in our duty as elected representatives of our town to turn this down, turn down this application. So I have a different point of view.
Bob, you want to say anything about the excerpts? That was all taken from the sightline verbiage of the, of the judge's--
And the judge--
I didn't interpret them.
The statute.
It's under, and transcribed it all afternoon.
The only thing I'll point out to the commission, and you accurately reflected the court's decision, the term affordable housing as used in 8-30G is not housing that is affordable. It is housing that is deed restricted and falls within the price range established under the statute. And Simsbury is in that group of Connecticut municipalities that have determined to qualify for 8-30G because of the lack of housing stock that is affordable as defined by the statute, indeed restricted affordable. That's a policy issue that the legislature has decided and imposed upon the commission. But like all other laws, we're bound by it and have no authority to override that statutory definition. But your characterization of what the court said is entirely accurate.
But then what about that passage on page 26? The concept that the land use agency must determine whether compliance is necessary because it clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing? And then it says we are allowed to weigh on that. And in fact, says on page 27, because the commission's decision denying the plaintiff's application did not consider or recite this question, that that was--
So Holly, if you remember, right towards the beginning when we started talking about the statute, in there, municipalities can be exempt from the statute if they have a certain amount of housing stock, stock that qualify as affordable under the statute.
I know that, but we're talking about the fact that we, because we did not discuss whether or not this was a need--
No, I think we, I think we did. And we said, Simsbury, by the, by the calculation set forth in the, in the statute, has about 2% affordable housing. Okay?
Wait, in the statute, you say, wait, by the way, there are a glut of homes at that level.
No, I--
It has to be federally financed, or government financed, right?
Not the way 8-30G defines them.
It has to be deed restricted and, you know, the statute outlines it pretty clearly, whether we like it or not.
I'm not saying whether we like it, we don't have a need for it. We're allowed to discuss whether we have a need for it. That's what I'm hearing from, that's what I see from what I read, and we don't have a need for it.
The discussion has to center around whether the harm to the public outweighs the need. I have to do both.
And I thought that the harm to the public outweighed the need, but we did not discuss-- we did not specifically discuss it. And because we did not, the, the judge stated that in his--
Okay, so Holly, maybe shame on us from your perspective, okay? But does the judge say the same thing for item 70 and 9?
That's what I thought your summary to us was. Does this harm outweigh the need?
Yeah. So, okay, we have to quantify the harm. We have to be substantial, I'll read it again till I work it down so I get it right, establish more than a theoretical possibility of specific harm to the public interest and quantify.
So, and remember, the three remanded issues have to do with drainage and how the drainage system functions and should it not function properly as predicted, would it create a substantial harm, more than a theoretical possibility of substantial harm to the public? That's really what you need to determine, based on what you've heard.
Yeah, the term is more than a theoretical possibility of specific harm to the public interest. Sorry, well, the public hearing is closed--
I know, but this is a very unique type of public hearing.
The public hearing is closed. There's no more testimony to be received. We're talking--
Some of the testimony we've heard several times. They're telling--
So Holly, relative to points 7, 8, and 9, is there--
I--
--evidence that you, that you can cite in the record that quantifies harm--
More than a--
--that more than theoretical, that outweighs the need for affordable housing? With the, with the basis that the statute is determining what's required, okay? Now, I don't know if it really says that, but they have the threshold of 10%, I believe, is where a municipality can be exempted from the statute. So if 10 is the, the bar, and we're at two, I maintain that here's a need for affordable housing in the town of Simsbury.
Per the statute.
Per the statute, not per Bill Rice's, you know, belief. Per the statute.
Well, the statute just asserts it. It doesn't establish it, that there is a need. And there is not a need. For four years, I have been checking the real estate section, not every week, but several times a month. And we have usually quite often 30% of the houses available for sale--
But you're ignoring--
--or less than that.
--that the legislature passed a bill, 8-30G.
I'm not ignoring that. I'm saying that we're allowed to discuss whether or not it's--
And we don't have affordable housing that's deed restricted. That's what they said. And this is all based on 8-30G, and that's what the judge is calling it.
And I have seen no evidence from any bit of the public record that we have a need for that.
Statue.
Not one bit of--
I think you start your comments by saying, the first thing you said is that Simsbury has a something terrific need or something for affordable housing?
For affordable. Remember when I said, when I was reading the judge's description, he used the word affordable housing? What he really should have said was 830G. Because if you're just talking affordable housing, we do. We have a desperate need for affordable housing. There are many people who cannot afford $275,000 for a house.
This whole discussion is around how 8-30G defines affordable housing.
Right. And I don't see any evidence in the record that we have a need for that either. I see evidence in the record that the legislature mandated that we should allow building of these units. But when the judge says we were allowed to debate, that's what shocked me on page 27, that we were actually allowed to debate whether the need outweighed the public harm. He said we established that there was public harm, and then we never said, well, the need outweighs this public harm. And had we done it, that would have had a different moment. And it's--
Couple of things, just to help you clarify this. I want to read the definition from the statute. It recalls it affordable housing, but the definition, 8-30G, is affordable housing development, which means a proposed housing development, which is A, assisted housing, not applicable here, or B, set aside development. Set aside development is also defined as means of development in which not less than 30% of the dwelling unit will be conveyed by deeds containing covenants or restrictions which shall be required that for these 40 years, the initial occupation of the proposed development shall be sold or rented at or below prices which will preserve the units as housing for such families that pay 30% or less of their annual income. The need is a, is a per se need if 8-30G applies to your community. If you fall below that threshold, the need is presumed to be present in your community under the statute. So to overcome that need, you have to find that, the substantial risk of identifiable harm to specific people. It's, it's like many statutory definitions, they don't match up with common sense definitions. Common sense definition of affordable housing is housing that sells for less than $250,000. Just like in FOI, the common sense definition of a meeting is not the FOI definition of a meeting. So for your deliberations, the statutory definition of affordable housing development is what you have to consider. And because Simsbury as a community falls below that 10% threshold, it's presumed that there is a need for affordable housing development. Now, to overcome that presumption of need, you'd have to find this risk of harm, substantial risk of harm, that the second prong is overwhelming the presumed need. I think that's probably the way you should look at it under the statute. And that's a legislative determination. You're going to be everything else entitled, you're bound by it. And in order to get relief from it, you got to go talk to the legislature.
Holly, I do, I understand where you're coming from, this, that, you know, but I do think we, we did have that debate about--
He says we did not.
Well, but, but we--
At least it was not part of our justification for denying--
No, then he's--
He didn't go through the minutes of two years.
Correct. And so we did have that discussion, and I think that's one of the reasons why we landed where we did, because we thought that the health and safety outweighed the need for affordable. I mean, that was the basis of our whole denial, really.
Well, he claims we didn't put it in the denial.
But we didn't--
I mean, I'm seeing, it's right here on page 27.
No, but he--
This refers to the meeting on the golden--
Correct.
--minutes. We discussed that issue a year previous.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up today.
Right.
Because we're going to a vote, and I'm not going to make this mistake twice.
But I think--
Because I now see that we are allowed to decide whether protecting the public interest clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing.
And I think that--
As defined by 8-30G.
But I think the, and I think that's correct, but if I, if I understand what Bob is saying, we, it has to be almost like beyond a reasonable doubt.
That's a way to look at it. You got to look at whether or not you have evidence of harm.
Right. It's not preponderance of evidence, it's really beyond a reasonable doubt that if you look at it from a legal point, you know--
More than a theoretical possibility of specific harm to the public interest. Based on what you've heard on these three issues, can you find that there is more of a theoretical possibility of substantial harm? Think about what you've heard from the two experts. If you find that harm, that's when you start to weigh in of the interest of statewide policy interest in public housing in communities like Simsbury.
And can I, so I think we, that's why we, that's one of the reasons why we denied. I think the judge was looking at--
Oh, I know it was why we denied.
And so that's when, but that's, so let me--
I want to--
Can I just finish?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I get where, you know, we want to be sure we're making a good decision, you know, for the, the area. But I, I think we did weigh in and we didn't get it wrong, and that we made a decision and denied the application last time because we, it outweighed the need for affordable housing. So we did do our due diligence, and that's one reason why we denied it. I don't think the interpretation is, we're not, we're not going to get it right this time. No, we got it right last time. We denied based on, we had good evidence. We spent a lot of time, and I thought we, a very thoughtful denial--
I agree with all of that, but it didn't land in the minutes of our decision.
It did land in the minutes. You're talking about a judge-- You're talking about a judge that took a look at a snapshot of two years' worth of, and so it did get in there. He's, he didn't see and hear all the debate, so it's--
Okay, I grant you that. I'm just saying, now we are making a decision, and I am making it public record that what we missed out in our last decision.
Right, and we didn't miss out, but I think now--
Yes, we did. We did not articulate it, and therefore, when he read, when the commission's decision did not consider or recite this question. So now we are considering it, we are reciting it, and I'm just coming up.
He's talking about the decision that was, you know, the written record, our 10 points.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm making my point, is that that wasn't one of them. It wasn't one of them.
Okay, so if your goal is to have in tonight's minutes that there was some discussion about this we've had.
Okay.
Back to what Bob was talking about, I'd submit there is little or no evidence that there's any public harm or danger. That's what I get on this. After all this boils down--
For the three remaining points.
For the three remaining points. I would argue the other seven--
And I would argue that the existence of flooding, of regular flooding in the immediate vicinity of this parcel shows that this is not merely theoretical.
Well, they testified there is no flooding.
There is no flooding according to the analysis of the design. And I grant, and I grant, and you've been very thorough, by the way. You've answered all of our questions. I grant that the analysis of the design shows theoretically that there is no harm, but the fact that flooding exists--
Can you--
Down the record that we have on the public record that flooding exists on a regular basis in the immediate parcels around, maybe the butters around this parcel, shows that that is, for me, not purely theoretical.
What they said is that their measures are going to make that less likely, is what their testimony was.
From the design.
Mm-hmm. I heard that. I heard that. That is the analysis.
Well, if you don't believe the expert, then you're going to vote that way.
Let me ask a question that comes to the same thing, but in a slightly different direction. And I'm going to direct, first question to Engineer Shea and Jeff. Who looks over the actual construction, that the construction is built to the design before certificates of occupancy are granted and things like that? Second question is, has this builder had experience, and has this builder built properties that have been--
Can you answer that? If the public hearing is closed, I don't think we can ask that question. You would have had to ask--
It's part of the question, you can certainly--
I think the first question's a very interesting question, because this is an 8-30G, it does not have to, does not have to comply with our subdivision regulations or our town highway standards at some level. So those types of concerns ought to be put into any motions if approval is being considered.
And the reason I asked the question is that the risk of harm comes if it is not built to the design. If we conclude that the design shows that it's not going to provide harm, but if it is not built to that particular design, then the harm results. And I don't know what the procedures are, maybe the builder is long gone when this, when that takes place.
We have, we have some protections that we've discussed, both myself and Mike Glidden, that, you know, it's part of potential conditions that would protect us, such as as-built drawings being provided to confirm that the design was built in accordance to the plans.
There's still a CO involved.
That's a separate process. My question--
Inspections are performed.
So you have two processes going on. You have the roadway and drainage construction utilities, and then you have lot development. The roadway and drainage utility construction, that's really what you've kind of landed on is the issues. Those would be something that would be handled through inspections during construction along with certifications and post-construction, that those features are built per the plans and function as intended, as they're shown in the drawings. Now, mirroring Jeff's comments, if you were to go down to a direction of approving this application, we would, we'd ask that you give staff time to draft a motion to approve this and cover some of those issues, such as requirements of as-bills, such as language of deed of the road in deed of the utilities, because this will be a public road with utilities, et cetera. So I guess, as your staff, I'd say your first comment is directing staff, if it looks like you're going down the road and saying, "We've deliberated, we don't find a measurable harm, could you prepare a motion for approval?" Or if you want to continue the discussion and go in the other direction, we'd prepare a motion, but then, like as Bob said earlier, we'd ask that you give us a measurable reason while you're saying no in the denial.
I mean, this is still a subdivision. It might be 8-30G, but it's still a subdivision to weigh in. And it seems to me that so long as the subdivision regulations don't eviscerate the 8-30G elements of this development, they can be incorporated into the approval. So that the builder would have to comply with those sections of the subdivision regulations that provide town assurances that the road is built to town spec, because the town is being asked to accept that.
That's where the risk lies, that it is not built to design.
No, 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 Bob said something else. Well, in a typical subdivision, there's a process that builders have to go through of acceptance of a road, which involves, correct me if I'm wrong, inspection along the way, is the drainage system built as designed? Is it, you know, as I mentioned, six inches of stone? Is there six inches of stone in the--
Those are the charges each has.
--charging, those sorts of things. You could cover that in the condition of approval that articulates that the subdivision regulations apply to those elements of the subdivision.
I, for one, will say that we're going to need those kind of protections. We need to feel comfortable. It's a very complex design of all the grading and the berm and all the other things, and they have to be in place. If they're not, then the issue of substantial harm comes to place. So there has to be some ability to confirm that that is actually what is put in place.
Certainly, you added more than what's shown on the pieces of paper you've--
Absolutely. That's the, that's the critical piece.
So you're afraid they won't follow through with what they had--
I didn't say that. I just, I wanted to know, first my question was one of lack of knowledge. What are the, what are the steps and procedures? And that's been helpful to know. And then I'm expressing my own personal opinion that those steps and procedures need to be in place to confirm for the benefit of the, of the public that this property is built as designed, both in terms of the road, the grading, all the components. It's a, it's a very, very complex design.
Yeah.
I'm an engineer. That's a complex design.
So, Michael, to go on it, because that's, that's a good point. It truly is. I mean, technically, they don't, they could deviate from what they testified to, correct? They could.
You mean potentially, or--
No, 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 I mean, they could just deviate, right? I mean, I think Dave has, I mean, is, if that's what, I'm just asking the question. I mean, could they technically, so what he's saying is making sure there's some assurances to make sure it's built with those, as planned.
Conditions of approval would give those assurances.
Okay.
It's kind of your safe part.
Yeah.
You have your plans, but then you also have the above and beyond spelling out.
If a motion of approval was drafted with all the protections, the commission is still free to vote no?
Of course, that's correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not preordained what our vote is, it's just that we're voting on a particular motion that meets our needs. Yea, yere, nay. How can we go wrong with that? That just seems to make sense.
Well, what we need to do is--
For purposes of, sorry, for purposes of discussion, I have a motion.
But I think we need to provide some direction--
For the motion.
--to town staff, so we could always say draft a positive and a negative response, okay? But I--
No, I think we need to land on that decision. I mean, that's just my--
Because you can vote no.
Right.
What if we voted no on both of them?
You don't need conditions when you vote no.
No, but no, but we need reasons why we voted no.
Exactly.
As a matter of fact, we need a lot more than what is normal, because the burden is on us.
That's exactly right. So I've got the order here. The commission shall hold a public hearing on remanded issues within 60 days thereafter. By closing the public hearing tonight, you've met that 60-day timeframe. And then the next one is, within 15 days after that hearing, the commission shall make evidentiary findings on these issues and make its decision on the remanded issues, along with the reasons and evidence supporting such a determination as required by 8-30G, and then file its decision in supplemental return of record with this board within 15 days thereafter. So within 15 days of tonight, because you've closed the public hearing, you have to make evidentiary findings on the three issues and make a decision on the three issues, along with the reasons and evidence supporting such a determination as required by 8-30G. That's more pertinent if you deny the application. If you approve it, then you're approving it based on your findings. So you've got 15 days from tonight to do all that.
I mean, it has to be done by the end of next meeting.
Right. Your next meeting is in two weeks. You need to vote that night.
Do you need to wait, Helen?
Well, I think that--
They need to draft a motion.
Right. But yes, if you were to, even despite the motion that you would get, any motion you get from the draft form until you raise it, if you were to deny this application, you'd have to carefully walk through each step of the standard, or at one point, evidence that's supported your determination on each step of this endeavor. Well, I personally am inclined to say that I'd like to direct the town staff to draft a motion in the affirmative, based on the testimony that's been received subsequent to the judge's orders. I believe that the applicant has answered the questions that we didn't give them a chance to answer when we made our decision. I think that was an element of the judge's orders as well, that the applicant was to have an opportunity to respond to comments such as, you know, lack of information. But the, the draft motion shall contain certain safeguards. We've heard a couple already, one about adherence to, to the plans. Dave, that's, that was your concern, something that protects the town from deviations to the, to the design? Yeah.
Mr. Shea, also, I believe you've mentioned recommendation for adherence to the subdivision regulations.
Right, so, you know, we can't, I don't think we can turn around and say the entire subdivision regulation applies because it doesn't. We can't.
Well, there are technical aspects, I think.
There could be. So if town staff, I'll ask two things. Commission to review the subdivision regulations and anything you think should be included as condition of approval, submit it to Mr. Glidden by Friday, directly to Mike, by Friday, because he's going to need time to craft this motion. Also, I'll ask town staff to use your judgment and experience to include conditions that also protect the town and the people. Okay? Now, Mike, will you be able to put something together and distribute it to the commission prior to the meeting?
Yes. Okay, then I'll have it for the Friday before the meeting, your next meeting.
Okay.
So it'll be--
Week from Friday.
Week from Friday.
No, how are these in there?
Quick turnaround.
Yeah, quick turnaround. Michael, also ask that you bring your computer with you.
Okay.
If we have to make changes to it, we can do it.
I can do that for you.
Because we have to render a decision--
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we have time to have a special meeting one day later. Is the commission in agreement with that?
We can--
Does it need to be a motion?
No.
So we've issued directions to town staff, and we're not going to vote on it tonight, okay? But take a look at the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Submit any suggestions you have to Mike, and we'll expect to see the draft motion by Friday, the 21st--
Second Tuesday.
21st. To support our meeting on the 25th.
We can't, I don't want to say suggestions, but if we had things we wanted to bring to the attention, we can't do that in this case, right?
What type of--
Fewer houses.
That's probably off the table. Other suggestions of a technical nature, certainly send them to Mike, and we'll talk about it, and we'll see whether it's-- We'll also, for those members that may be trying not to vote yes, we'll also lay out the standard that would need to be met to vote, you know, against, or to affirm the decision to deny, really. Because we already denied the application. To affirm that decision, see if denial is this three issues, we'll lay out the standard of how that would come out, because we don't want to presume that you're going to go one way or the other.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes that subject, I believe. For the time being. For tonight, for tonight. Okay, next on the agenda--
Can I ask a clarifying question? So even though the public hearing is supposed to, town staff, we can still ask, it's just a--
You can ask town staff, meaning Jeff, Mike, and myself, to interpret that evidence that is in the record--
Okay.
--and apply standards to it.
Okay.
We can't add anything new.
Okay.
But we can look at it and say, this is how you should interpret it, this is the legal standard, this is what the subdivision regulations say, to assist you in coming to a determination based on the public hearing record.
Thank you for that question.
Okay, item 5, new business that pertains to the application we were just discussing, and I think it's clear that we will not be making a motion tonight, okay? And under new business, there is no receipt of new applications, that's still the case, Mike?
Nothing yet. But you have one at least on the immediate horizon. It's reaffirming subdivisions approved, re-subdivisions approved in 2017, they failed to file their MYLARs, so it's going to be a procedural hearing.
Say that again.
It was a two-lot re-subdivisions approved in January of 2017. The applicant failed to file their MYLARs after the approval, within 90 days, so the approval is null and void. They have to come back to revalidate that.
Which ones are?
It's Castor Bridge Crossing, Dorset-- Dorset Crossing, there was a two lots, they moved the cul-de-sac--
Oh, yeah.
--from one side to the other. Yeah, they failed to file their plans, so--
Get another fee out of it?
Yes, we're getting another fee out of it, about $700 something dollars. That's an immediate application, and there's something else in the works.
Okay. Any referrals?
None.
Any general commission business such as correspondence? I didn't notice that on, was it County Road? And we had that two-lot subdivision, well, it ended up with three lots. The family came in and said we want a subdivision. It backs up to Great Pond--
Holcomb.
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 I saw, under contract on one of those--
Oh, really?
--for-sale sites.
We'll wait for the check.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because that would be another fee. Yeah, because that would be another fee in lieu of...
Yeah.
Those have been there a while.
No, Mr. Cave, Mr. Cave, Tom Goswell, he paid his fee while he was filing his plans.
Oh, good God.
Because he had four lots under a contract.
Did he sell them?
Yes.
He sold the house. I know that he sold the house. I don't know if he sold the lot, but he's still, he was like, "I want to pay it, so it's not hanging over my head."
So we find that a count put it in?
Find it's good. Checks cash, and Sidman someone's in there.
Okay, that appears to be all. Motion adjourned?
You know, I have a question. I'm just curious, did the public hearing happen on the...
McLean.
Yes, thank you. You're reading my mind.
It did, and the zoning commission approved the application with effective date July 1st.
Thank you.
So your comments regarding affordable housing was discussed, and the applicant was going to investigate that on submission of site plan, potentially as some affordable units.
That would be nice. Relative.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Nope.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.